Ready?
I am.
Good evening. Welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We have information on how to join both in person or community comments remotely on the Dover Sherburne website, and please note that this meeting is being recorded and anything that you say or do can be captured by the recording. Before I read the public comment preamble, do we have anyone either in person tonight or on Zoom who would like to make a community comment? All right, hearing none, we're going to go on with the next item on our agenda. Thank you. Which is our superintendent update.
All right, good evening and thank you. As I've been saying since mid-August, Happy New Year as we enter a new school year. Before I go into my full update, I do want to make sure that I mention all of the people who work so hard over the summer to prepare for the opening of schools. These are our employees who work alongside us September through June and then kick it into overdrive over the summer. So just thanks to our custodians for all of the work and the projects that they undergo and undertake in the summer, to our IT staff who fixes and replenishes everything plugged in, to the food service staff who continue to order over the center, over the summer central office, and they'll be hearing about our new employees in central office, obviously key in employing all of our new members, our administrative assistants who make sure that everything is ready to run for the first day of school, our 19 bus drivers who came ready to go and are already making, building relationships with kids, and of course, our leadership team who continue to do everything to support our teachers in preparing and our students. I would especially like to thank John and Ann for your warm opening of the school building. I've heard very positive feedback from staff and from kids and from families, and thank you for your ongoing support of our new leadership team at the middle school, David and Tracy. Again, fabulous feedback so far, such a positive feel in the building, and it's been so great to see your newsletter to staff, your newsletter to families, so thank you for all of your efforts so far. All right, so that said, Denny and I launched our school year on August 17th with the leadership team. That's when we spend all summer preparing to bring our team together, and as you've heard, our themes this summer are really focused on joy and kids. After the year that we had last year, hoping that it would be more typical, but needing to continue to pivot, given the needs, the social, emotional, academic, and behavioral needs of our students coming out of the pandemic. All of our educators left last June extremely tired, having given all of themselves to the kids in the classroom. So this year, we really wanted to refocus our energy on the passion and the love that brought us to this profession and enjoy the kids and the energy and the curiosity that's in front of us each day. So August 17th and 18th, we brought the leadership teams together at the MIT Endicott House for two days, and we focused on the best practices that are common across challenge, success, equity, and many of the various initiatives we've been studying over the last years, all to say really, what is it that we're trying to do as educators in the best interest of kids? Our second day was focused primarily on work around diversity, equity, and inclusion and preparation for our equity audit, which we'll be getting the final results for next week. And in the spirit of joy and fun and kids, we even did a little singing and dancing at the leadership retreat. Each of us brought our own theme song that we thought represented who we are as a person currently at this moment in time. We created a mashup and had a little bit of fun, so you can ask the rest of the team about that at a later date. Denny and I really tried hard to model during the leadership retreat some of the best practices that we know our leaders certainly model for teachers during their meetings about sending out our kind of the nuts and bolts in a memo and really focusing the time that we have together on discussions and activities and building community, providing choice in how we do things, and of course, sharing best practices in this experience so that we can all grow as educators. Opening convocation, many thanks to Maggie and Judy for attending and helping to support the kickoff of the school year with the teachers. That was August 29th. Teachers entered Lincoln Commons and had some coffee and conversation. They were surprised by a photo booth where they got to have some props and have some lapses. They got their photos taken with their colleagues. I think you probably saw one in the middle school updates. That was super fun. And then, of course, they entered the auditorium and got to see photos of their colleagues having joyful moments over the summer, which is always kind of a positive experience and a tradition that we've grown to love. We recognized the difficulties of last year and talked a lot about finding the joy and focusing on the kids this year moving forward. We did a poll during opening, the opening convocation, asking teachers in the audience to text in, "What brings you joy? What are you good at? And why did you go into education?" Again, reinvigorating that spark that brought them here and why we want to be, or what we want to bring to the classrooms this year. And then we also asked for input as to if you got to choose a theme song, what would it be? And of course, we've got lots of fun answers, and we can ask you all that at some point, too. We'll give you a little time to think about that. And just an expectation and hope that whatever joy and strengths and will that they brought into teaching, they can continue throughout the year, and we'll just have to make sure that we pace ourselves so that we can get through June. After focusing on the joy of teachers, we turn to kids, and typically, as I said, our tradition has been to ask teachers to send in joyful moments from the summer, and we create a slide deck. This year, we did the same thing for students. We asked parents and students to send in photos from the summer and created a slideshow of their joyful moments and included in it where their names, their grade, and the few things that bring them joy, and it was a reminder again why we went into this business. So Denny will show you on the next slide, a few of the lessons I learned in having gone through that activity. We talked about how kids are inherently happy, innately curious, and instinctively creative, and the slideshow definitely showed all of those things. These are a few of my takeaways. I had more, but the first was a reminder as an educator that people want to be seen and heard. I had sent out this email requesting photos of the kids from the summer to all K-12 families and our 6-12 students. I had over 200 email responses and 400 photos, and families even gave me an option. They'd sent me five photos and I got to pick my favorite. But it was just a reminder that they too are looking for these moments and want their kids, themselves as students or their children, to have joy in life and in school. I also want to note that there is an overrepresentation of our non-white students who sent in photos, and I thought that was interesting that there was a request, "We want to see you. We want to hear from you." And our population really spoke up and said, "Yes, here I am." And so I'm hopeful that our DEI work moving forward will continue to strengthen those voices and allow them to be brave in sharing all that they have to offer. The second was that so many of the pictures, the kids were doing things. It's a reminder as teachers that kids learn by doing, and so we definitely want to make sure that that's happening this year in the classroom. In the bottom corner, a reminder that our population is growing more and more diverse every year, and that's super fabulous because there are so many perspectives and voices and viewpoints that we can learn from in the classroom, and we want to make sure that we make space to do that. And lastly, there were so many ice cream photos. I said, "When all else fails and you have a bad day, that's when you pick up the ice cream cone." So just a little bit of summer fun there. We then talked a little bit more about joy and saying, you know, not only is it good to have in the classroom, important to have in the classroom, but it's important for learning. And I thought this was a really powerful quote. "It is literally neurologically impossible to think deeply, deeply about things you don't care about." So we need to inspire kids, hook them in, get them engaged, feeling comfortable in the classroom with their teachers, their classmates, in order for them to really learn deeply, things that they're going to be able to hold on to for years to come. And so at that moment, we all committed as educators that moving forward, our goal would be to listen to students, learn their theme songs, get to know their stories, engage them in deep learning, celebrate success, and then capture endless moments of joy over the year. Towards the end of our convocation, we celebrated a number of our regional staff members who have been serving our kids for 15, 20, and 25 years. They are listed here. We also recognized many of our new educators, and the list was in your packet. You'll notice the list this year is quite long and exciting. I know that John mentioned at our orientation for new staff, how exciting it is to have what he said was new blood or new perspectives coming into the building to share practices and grow our practices as educators. At the region specifically, I'm trying to read in the dark. We have 21 new educators and 11 new EAs. We have four new leaders, including Denny, David, Tracy, and Mimi Freerick, who is our new special education coordinator at the secondary level. She's joining us from Wellesley, and she's fantastic. And pre-K-12, we have a total of 38 new educators and 28 new educational assistants, which is three times the normal amount that we would. So lots of new perspectives and lots of new voices to hear from. So with all of these folks working together and rowing in the same direction, capturing the joy along the way, we have three district priorities, which you saw in the spring when we talked about what our goals would be as a district and when we developed our school improvement plans for the high school and the middle school. So the first is setting a strategic path, again, thinking about all that we have explored in terms of challenge, success, DEI, innovative teaching and learning, portrait of a graduate, and saying, "What is it that we've learned from all these things? We've piloted, if we've experimented, what do you want to keep moving forward in the classroom that we can all agree to as best practices for our kids?" And I think Denny's going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Obviously, preparing for our equity audit, we have a lot of information coming our way next Tuesday, and so making sure that we have time and space to read through the report, listen to the voices, look at the recommendations, and then use that information to develop the strategic plan, along with all of the information that Denny and I are collecting through our entry meetings, and then continued work in supporting all students, their academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs, not only as we did before the pandemic, but especially since the pandemic, meeting them where they're at, making sure that all of the instruction we have in our general education classrooms is differentiated to meet their needs and that we are continuing to use our service providers, our interventionists, to do small groups for levels two and three. So, thank you. Lastly, just a few updates on COVID guidelines. As you saw in the opening letter, we've been communicating with Desi and the commissioner. We've had meetings with our health and hygiene advisory groups, advisory group, and continue to communicate with our new nurse leader, Megan Smith, who's fantastic. Things are very basic at this point in time, and we hope it continues that way based on trends. As you know, we're a mask optional environment. We're providing take-home tests to students and staff who'd like to bring those home. At the region, we have roughly 200 students signed up to be taking home tests and roughly 40 staff members. Dawn continues to work with the director of facilities to make sure that our air ventilation quality is top-notch, and thanks to, again, Megan and our school nurses, we are offering a flu and booster clinic for our staff, and we'll explore the possibility of offering that for our students and families as well. The extended day program, as you know, and I believe I shared an article with you, that it's been unfortunately a high demand for extended day care for children across Massachusetts, and I'm sure beyond. We've had our own struggles here in Dover and Sherburne, and Dawn, supporting Lisa Sawen in the community ed program, can provide us with some updates.
Great, so obviously hiring is a big issue, so just to give you some perspective, when we set the contracts out in June for returning employees, we had three contracts that we sent out to the SHEDA program, so we knew we had some work ahead of us. We had already set new rates because we know the market, hiring market has changed, so we did some market adjustments to our two position rates. Pretty significant, they both went up over $1.50 in their starting rate. And so in the last two weeks of August through aggressive, all summer, we were aggressive with hiring, but no one's really thinking about taking a job in September until it gets closer to September. So we now have nine employees in various positions, and some are five days, some are less than five days, but we are fully staffed to what capacity we can have for students at SHEDA. DETA was a little bit of a different issue because there's always a little bit of smaller program at DETA. I will say that when we closed registration at the end of April for both programs, we had no waitlist at DETA, but we had a significant waitlist at SHEDA. I think that thus was sort of the email that you saw. So the, we had 89 families in total apply to the SHEDA program, and by the end of school ending, we had accommodated 53 families. We have been able to add some more families as we go on. We will not deplete our waitlist. We don't even have capacity to manage the over 120 students who applied to DETA. Our cap is between 80 and 90. I can't give you the exact number because we do group kids by age, and so we might have some capacity in one group, but no students in that group, so that's, we think, look at that so that we put, we group like we have a K-1 group, 2, 3, 4, 5. If there's enough, we split them up. So it's very organized in how they take enrollment. So I think that in the last two weeks of August, we did yeoman's work. We had like people come from all the different recruiting areas. I was trying to figure that out today. So we had one from the old-fashioned school spring. We had one because all summer long, when we were updating families, we asked them to please ask their friends and refer, refer people to us, and we got one or two that way. Beth sent a district-wide email out, we got one that way. So we were getting them in various avenues, but we tried to exhaust every avenue to make sure. So we feel very strong, we feel really good about the staff. Two of the ones, though, is Sherburne aren't starting until October because they have other commitments. At that point in time, we're hoping to take another five to seven families off the waitlist, and so they will be notified after next week, once we know the staff, all the new staff we hired appears to like what they're doing and plan to stay with us. So at the end of the day, we're going to be between 80 and 90, as I said, capacity at Sher, at SHEDA, and we're a little less than that in DETA, but there will be no waitlist. We have exhausted the waitlist that we did accrue after school ended at DETA. So that's good news there. So I think we started attacking this back in March. We did do surveys of all the area programs and put ourselves a little bit above the median for staffing, and I think some of the perks we're finding, because we are getting staff members from other after-school programs, is that our, if you're a group leader or a lead teacher with us, the benefits that we provide attached to that position greatly elevate above what other area programs are doing. So that's been a huge plus for us. So I have to commend Lisa Sawen and Tracy Carlin, who's our current director of SHEDA, because unlike, they did not take the summer off. They were working tirelessly, both one, trying to answer the continuous emails they got from families who were stressed, but also trying to find staff so that we could actually take up to our capacity.
What governs our capacity?
90.
But what?
Oh, it is sort of space. So there are square footage requirements that we take into consideration per child and the space that we're able to utilize at Pine Hill. So we use the cafeteria and the auditorium and a couple of classrooms, but we can't take over the whole school. And having one-site director, which is sort of what Tracy Carlin is, you know, you can't spread her too thin either. So that is what they feel comfortable with managing in that space that they have on a daily basis. Most of the families in our SHEDA program are there five days. Unlike DETA, it's more mixed, which is why we were able to take everyone off the waitlist because there's three days, four days, and it all works. But I will have to say, our SHEDA program is probably 99.2% five-day people.
Wow. I'm wondering, as we think ahead, just sort of like, you know, projecting out that this is a growing need in these two communities, particularly at Sainsbury and Sherburne, is it worth speaking to the other, like, sort of large people gathering areas in town, whether it's houses of worship or other community organizations? I'm thinking about, you know, whether anyone would want to even host like a YMCA program or like, you know, a Tobin program or something, just because I know we've never really had the amount of people that would make it worthwhile for one of those groups to come and staff, but it seems like we're getting close to that, and I do feel for the families who move here, thinking that it would be totally reasonable to put their kids in aftercare, and only to find out that's like actually not a thing.
Yeah, this is the highest number of applications they've ever had in history. Because I asked what the typical, because waitlist is in a given year, and obviously, it's really nothing in DETA, and probably five to 10 families in SHEDA is the norm. So this is an anomaly year. We have to see if this is going to continue, and then I think there would be enough that we could see if there, if there was another program that wanted to start off. The issue with that is transportation to that program from the school. But to see, the only other thing that we could do is actually see if there was space and sort of create a whole separate SHEDA program that had, it mirrored, so that we had a separate director, and so they, you know, you need, you actually need to oversight people if you get more than, if you grow over 90. So that was something that we actually talked about, but at this point in time, I don't think we could even staff. So I think there's a lot of factors that go into this, and believe me, we've spent a lot of time talking about what our options are going forward, but that was the one thing we did talk about, is actually having a second program that would have all the same infrastructure as our first one, but that would allow us to sort of duplicate that as long as we could find adequate space to use at Pine Hill that wasn't invading what's needed for, you know, just the school in general, so.
Or do you know whether other districts are also, also experienced a sort of explosion in the number of people?
Absolutely. There was a, did you say you sent them the Boston article?
I did, just recently.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And there's a group.
Oh, right.
The, the Neds, which is the network for extended day directors, and that has been their topic of conversation all summer, which has given some comfort to our people, knowing that we're all in this together and it's not just us. But you can go search. I was just searching other areas, and there's waitlist everywhere. Ex-staffing is a huge issue. Some of the programs took too many, took a lot of people in April and May, and now we're at the point where they don't have the staffing and are having to tell families they can't. Lisa and her two directors felt really strongly about not taking more than we felt like we could handle, knowing that we had lost some staff, and we struggled with staffing towards the last part of last year. So that's why we had a little bit larger of a waitlist, because they didn't want to overpromise and then not have staff, because safety is our top priority for students. So like I said, the last two weeks, we've been able to bring, you know, several, you know, handful, more than handful of families off the waitlist, but the two new people that we're expecting to start in October, we think we could bring five to seven more families off the waitlist.
Thank you so much. This has been, you know, as you, as you mentioned, a ton of work on your part, and also, I know, on Superintendent McCoy, and also for Lisa and Tracy. And so thank them so much, because I know that, you know, people don't always realize that the community ed falls under the region, especially when it's caring for elementary kids. But, you know, I know we expressed concern in the summer, some, you know, a number of us, and I appreciate how much work has gone into trying to meet these families' needs. Thanks.
Thank you.
But it does seem like it's been a historic issue, because we moved, I mean, I'm in Dover now, and I've been in Dover for 12 years, but we moved here 20 years ago to Sherburne, and there was a waitlist then, and we ended up starting our kids in Montessori.
Yeah, it's the extent of how big the waitlist is.
Yeah, so I guess that's, we probably ought to think about that fact that we've had a waitlist coming and going, you know, for at least 20 years that I've been aware of, and if it's a matter of space, we should really think about getting more space.
It's always a staffing, I mean, this is a, this was one of the worst staffing issues, but we're usually never fully staffed. That, you know, I've been in this role now seven years, so we're always like a little touchy, but we have made a little incentive for our EAs who are already at the building. If they'll commit to three hours, we're giving them a little bit of a higher rate to entice them to stay. So we've been able to take two EAs, which is great because they know the students typically, and if they'll agree to share the week, we've made them a group leader by taking those two individuals. So we've been very creative in trying to not overtax people who've already been up to work all day, but they've been willing to sort of step up and help out. So that's happening at both Dover and Sherburne, which is nice, and that's really what helped us sort of be fully staffed of our educational assistants who have agreed. We actually have some of our food service staff too at Pine Hill who stay after and work for us as assistants. So, you know, it takes a village, and everyone's willing to sort of step up to the plate, and that's what keeps it all, all together right now. So I think we've been fairly resourceful in where we try to draw from and making it financially appetizing for someone to come, come join the program. So we hope we can stick with it and we keep all the staff that we have, because we have a really good, diverse group of staff right now, both males and females that mix well with the students, but half of them are coming from other programs, so it's nice to have that experience that they bring to our, to our program. So I think there's, now that we're sort of settled, there's a new sense of, okay, this looks like it's going to work, and they're, they really feel like they've gelled together, and they're feeling really excited about the start of the year. That was really, that was a great, great to hear.
Thank you. Other comments on any of the other superintendent update items? Welcome to you. You've welcomed everybody else, so this is really your start of your superintendency, and I really appreciate it. You know, it's taken a lot of work to pull together an entire new, basically widely new leadership team and to do all the work to get everything rolling, and so thank you
Yeah, thank you.
For everything, and we're looking forward to the next few years.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
So is it okay if I turn it over to the new assistant superintendent? So it has been an absolute pleasure getting to know Denny since he officially arrived on campus July 1st, and working with him and seeing that he is so flexible and adaptable at all times, and it's just, it's just been wonderful to have a partner who I feel like I can rely on, who can, you know, we can, we can brainstorm together, we can push each other a little bit, and so I'm very excited to have this opportunity to work with Denny moving forward, and I'll let you share all of his, I'll let him share all of his exciting news around teaching and learning.
Great. So it's good to see everybody. It's been an awesome first couple of months here in the district, and everybody within the community, school community, Dover and Sherburne have been so welcoming and so friendly and so exciting to begin to form relationships with. So not a ton of items in the realm of teaching and learning, but just wanted to give you some updates on some events that have been going on. I've spent a lot of the summer just reading over documents, talking to people, getting to know what's gone on in the district already. So that's how I spent a lot of the summer, and then we really started gearing up for the opening of school. On August 23rd, that was our instructional launch day, so we had over 25 teachers attend that day. They were our elementary PLC leaders, our middle school curriculum leaders, and our high school department heads that came to the instructional launch, and Beth and I both planned that as almost a mini version of the leadership retreat. So on the instructional launch day, we focused on the idea of powerful learning experiences. We talked about some of the most powerful learning experiences that we've had, either in school or in life, and what embodied all of those experiences. And then we started to think about what best practices for engaging our students in powerful learning experiences look like. So the teachers did a lot of collaboration that day. They came up with about 10 different best practices that they thought would be good for engaging our students. So for example, engaging in actually doing the work, you know, working with authentic audiences, using a variety of different skill sets across content areas in order to understand and grow and develop. So that's what came out of that instructional launch day. The thing that I think is really great about this is now those leaders are going to take that activity and they're going to bring it back to buildings next week, and they're going to do it with the staff of the whole buildings. So at the end of the day, they'll go through the process again. Each building will come up with a list of their best practices, then I'll work to summarize everything, and we'll have some really awesome, common best practices that we want to look for this year through evaluations. We're also then going to have grade levels and content areas, take those best practices, and then within each specific content area, like science or social studies or math, what do these best practices look like, sound like, and feel like in the classroom? So to make it more specific and a bit more granular. So that was the instructional launch. The day after that, it was a very busy week. The day after that, we had Jeff Horowitz, who works with Katie Novak and her educational consulting group, give a presentation on multi-tiered systems of supports. So for that day, we had 27 teachers, eight administrators, and the goal of that day was to think about the information that we use in order to make decisions about our instruction, teaching, learning, and about how we work with different students. So we started to think about what is the type of information, what's the type of data that we need to collect, and then once we have that information, how do we work together in small teams and large teams to use that data to make informed decisions about how we best support all of our students? So that work is continuing on. We're doing some more of the multi-tiered system supports work with Katie Novak. She was just at middle school this past week, and she'll be continuing her work this fall and early into the winter with the district to just learn about better ways that we can support all of our students and meet them where they are at. Then the next day, we had our new staff orientation, so. day, we had our new staff orientation. Uh, so, uh, like, uh, Beth mentioned, we had a huge crop of new teachers and staff in the buildings. Um, so Keith Kaplan really spearheaded that. He's our mentor coordinator. So we had our mentors and our mentees there that day. Um, it was really, really great energy. And, you know, we took the, we gave the new staff an overview of the district. They looked at some demographics. They talked about, um, things that they saw or the mentors talked about, examples that they saw of supporting all students and shared that with the mentees, uh, which is great to see. Uh, we have future meetings now that are going to focus on student supports, uh, coaching, um, and we're going to do a session on diversity, equity, inclusion, I believe in December, uh, with the new teachers. Um, and then last part is I've been doing a lot of classroom visits. That's the biggest focus I have right now is getting into buildings, getting into classrooms. Um, and if I'm supposed to be working on teaching and learning, I need to see that teaching and learning going on. Um, so I've tried to block out a lot of time to actually start to get into classrooms. Uh, last week I was spending some time at the high school and I got into a French classroom, which somebody told the French teacher that I knew how to speak French. So I was expected to like participate and understand and make that same mistake. Um, they were having a very complex discussion about the role of technology in our lives today, all in French. Uh, so I was thoroughly impressed with the fluency that the students were showing. Uh, I was especially impressed with the way that when students didn't necessarily know a French word or a conjugation, how they continued on with what they were saying. So like I said, really building fluency. Um, I was in middle school classrooms. I've seen a lot of norm setting. Uh, one classroom, students were thinking about what would their ideal classmate look like? And they were using that brainstorm as a way to think about, um, the classroom rules and classroom norms that they were going to set. I saw another middle school class, uh, where students had videoed these flip grid introductions where they were giving some information about who they were. Um, and then students were going to use that information to practice writing formal emails, which I appreciate as somebody who has gotten many informal emails from students over the years. Um, so I thought that was fantastic to see as well. So it's, one of the best parts of my week is getting into the classrooms and talking to the teachers, uh, through my entry plan meetings. I've been meeting with various teachers and staff and getting to know them and again, starting to build relationships with them. Um, and last thing on my little update is, um, to follow our new Twitter account that we have for teaching and learning in the district. Uh, so all of you at home, there it is. DS Teach Learn. Uh, so as I'm getting into classrooms and trying to document some of the great things that our educators are doing, retweeting some of the great, um, things that our various school accounts are doing as well. So that's a great thing to follow and that is all I have in terms of my update.
I encourage you to come to the Sherburne and Dover meetings where Denny's going to share his rug time, his meeting, morning meeting time with the kids and how his day evolves depending on grade level he is with and, and his interaction with the kids, which is super fun.
Yes. I made a lot of first grade friends at Chickering last week. Uh, very excited to see me again.
Don't you have any questions?
Thank, thank you so much, Denny. Are there questions, comments?
Just a quick comment. Um, Denny, I remember one of the things you said during your interview was that, you know, you love to spend the vast bulk of your week in classrooms, at recess, in the cafeteria and just being visible and trying to get a sense on, you know, the culture of the school and, and what, how things align with these best practices and so on. And it's wonderful to see a few examples already. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think Dr. Brown has roped me into lunch duty at Pine Hill. There you go.
Not surprised.
Didn't she make you perform during your interview there during your time at Pine Hill?
Um, she had suggested dancing might be something that I could do and so, yeah.
Anything else?
I, I will say thank you for sharing the anecdote about the email. And you might be interested to know that my son went off to college, um, graduate of DS this year. He shared with us that he was surprised that one of their orientation classes was specific instructions on how you write an email to your professor with examples of what you do and don't do. And he's like, you know, Mom, I, I've, I've been a, I would, we would never send those emails at DS. So I appreciate that it seems like most kids leave our school knowing that. And it doesn't seem to be the case all over the country. So thank you. Um, all right. Thank you very much for all your work and for all the being out and about. And we will look forward to some more entertaining stories.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Smith?
Yep. I'm sorry. Yes. Turning it over to our infamous principal, Mr. Smith.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent McCoy, members of the regional school committee. Um, as Ms. McCoy said, we've, we've had a fantastic start to the school year, a really positive start. I think just some basic return to normalcy type of pieces has really helped a lot. Um, you know, we're, we're fortunate right now. Our COVID numbers are incredibly low. We have really good plans in place. Kids are feeling, I think, safer. We still have our respect the choice campaign going. We talked to every single class about that and, uh, our kids really have responded, uh, well to that. One of the things I'm really excited about and I put in my report and, and as McCoy had mentioned, um, a number of new staff members, which for me is always exciting and exhilarating. Two in math, one in computer science, a new school psychologist, and we also have a, a long-term, uh, sub in chemistry. And, uh, we're very fortunate and similar to what Ms. Vittori was saying in business, that, um, it's a challenging time to hire. And, um, you know, even for some positions, we're just not seeing the numbers. But what I will say is the quality of our candidates was quite strong. We had a really good interview process and we were very fortunate to land good people. I think that's a tribute to the district. I think it's a tribute to our kids and, and to, um, you know, what they bring to the table for an opportunity to teach at Dover Sherburne. Um, and, uh, talking to the new staff, they're really excited to be here. So really it's been a great start to them. Um, also want to thank the regional school committee because as, as a result of your support and the taxpayers of Dover and Sherburne, we were able to add some new, uh, spots. We were able to, um, you know, increase our math and our English by point two, which brings our class size lower. The math allowed us to have another section of financial literacy and to also look at one of our, uh, freshman sections and to lower that. So obviously our student to teacher ratio is lowered, which is fantastic. Um, we also this year are offering some new courses. We have three full sections of forensics, which is really exciting. Uh, they're all capped at 24 and they're all full at 24. Um, we're offering acting workshop this year, which I am so excited about. I know that Ms. Miller would be thrilled to hear that. Um, you know, it's something that's been on our books and, and Mr. Herman has really been, uh, pushing for it, uh, for students to sign up because we have such a strong drama program. So that's really exciting and we're hoping to build off of that as well. Uh, we've also been able to add a second section of AP computer science and it's being taught by one of our new, um, computer science teachers, Mr. Schultz, who, uh, has already jumped in and is coaching freshman boy soccer as well, uh, which, you know, in our school system is just a great way to make connections with kids, get to know kids, kids get to know them in the classroom, outside the classroom. That's been really positive. Another just great piece of data from, uh, music and performing fine arts as a result of the flex block, which we know handles a number of different things, but one of the components when we built it was to really strengthen our music program. We have 70 members in our school band. We have 60 in our chorus. Once again, absolutely awesome. Jeff Herman and Janice Berry are beside themselves. Um, they said we may need a bigger boat. And, uh, but, but they're thrilled by that and so are we. Uh, it's just another prime example of us really, you know, growing community and we know that we have the kids who wanted to do it and creating a schedule where they, they can have music and, um, so that's been really exciting. Uh, flex block as a whole has really worked well because we've been able to transfer a lot of our shorter meetings and we're not pulling kids from classroom time, which we think is really valuable and important. But it has also enabled us to sometimes dismiss kids for sporting athletic events without missing academic classes. Uh, the line of, um, of sports, those have all started. We've already seen some really, uh, great performances, a lot of success. We, for the first time, have, uh, three levels of boys and girls soccer, uh, JV1, JV2, which is great. So that participation rate is up. Um, all the teams are, have started off incredibly well. We've got a couple of new staff members who are, um, coming on board with those teams and they're also educational assistants in our school. So once again, just a great way to connect, um, with our kids. And, uh, overall, I had mentioned in my report, 181 freshmen. So it's a little bit of a larger class. We're in the 670 range, 15 transfer students. We had a really nice, uh, new student day. Students from, um, you know, the east coast, the west coast. Um, one student came back from Spain. So really, uh, really nice diverse group of students who have come in. And I guess just the last piece to mention is we're excited to bring back our in-person open house, which will be held Thursday, September 29th from 6 to 8. But we also understand that sometimes for two reasons. One, there's still some COVID concerns and two, sometimes people's busy schedules. So we're still creating those screencastifies for parents and guardians who can watch them. So they do get to know their, um, child's teachers, but if they do wish to come in person, they can do that as well. So really excited. It's been, it's been a great start. Um, I have a tremendous assistant principal in Anne Keegan. Um, I couldn't ask for a better partner. And, um, I think we just, we really work hard to keep the focus on kids, getting to know kids and keep the focus on the instructional time and try to keep all the other stuff buffered away from them so that kids can just do what they need to do. On a rainy day like today, the kids did say they would love to have that little carport, uh, put over, but for the most part, when the weather's nice, they love being able to go in and out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Principal Smith. Um, comments, questions from the school committee? Thank you for a great start
Thanks.
To the school year. It's really exciting and I, I see that, uh, sporting events have resumed. The rain appears to be over. We have, I think it's field hockey.
Field hockey, right?
Go DS, field hockey.
All right. Thank you. Um, again, introducing Mr. Lawrence, our new middle school principal and for his first school committee report.
Yeah. Um, so hello. Uh, it, it's been a great start. Um, it's been such a joy to finally have the kids back, uh, and the staff back after being, uh, just Tracy and I and Katie Launigan and just a couple of other people over the summer. Um, the energy that, uh, that the, the kids and the staff bring, um, was a real shot in the arm. Um, and it's been a really positive start. Um, we, uh, we started the year off with the staff, um, with a theme, uh, which is, um, I think very much, uh, in line with a lot of the things that, um, we've already talked about that the district has as a priority, which is that we're building a joyful, inclusive community of engaged learners where everybody grows. Um, and, uh, teachers have really, um, taken to that. And I, I, I was really, um, pleased with the community building and the fun and, um, just the, the way that they all kind of embraced, um, really getting to know and build relationships with their kids from the get-go. Um, and, uh, got into lots of classes and saw lots of the same things that , uh, Denny was sharing, um, all sorts of creative ways to, um, to introduce your class, but while also getting to know your, uh, your students and having them get to know each other. So that was really fun to see. Um, the D1A assembly, our, our first day assembly, um, was really amazing for me to get to see because I'd never seen it before. I mean, I apparently they haven't had it in a couple of years. Um, but it was, you know, a, a pretty much completely student-led introduction to the middle school for the students. And, um, it was just great. We had, uh, live jazz band with three vocalists. Um, and then, uh, various presentations that the kids wrote themselves and slides they created themselves. And, um, feedback at the lunch, you know, at lunch when I was, you know, sitting with the kids was really positive, that they really loved hearing from their peers, uh, rather than just adults. Um, so that was really positive. Just a shout out to the adults who made, helped to make that happen. In addition to the eighth grade students who participated, to Tom Dupre, uh, Aaron Newman, Angelo Macchiato and Heather Bond, uh, who worked really hard to make that happen, to make it look effortless. Um, our student council is forming now. Um, we've got two new, uh, advisors for that and they're really trying to make it as inclusive a group as possible. So everybody's invited to, uh, to participate. Um, and we're really hoping to make that a, um, a source for student voice to be heard and, um, to help plan joyful, uh, celebrations and activities throughout the year. So I'm really excited to see that get started and to, um, and to work with them. Uh, everybody is very stoked about the SpongeBob musical that's coming. Um, and I think there's a lot of kids who are, um, who are participating, um, both, you know, as cast and crew. Uh, so that's really exciting. A lot of buzz about that. And, um, lastly, we, we had a really terrific day of professional learning recently, um, where, uh, Katie Novak, uh, came and, and met with our staff during our before-school faculty meeting. And then we were able to kind of work our sub-coverage so that each department could have about an hour, um, with, with Katie to, um, start to, uh, apply those ideas directly to their disciplines. Um, and, you know, just the beginning, but it was a good launch, I think, for the work that we're going to be doing for the rest of the year. That's about it. It's been a really, really positive start. Every day is a, a day with new, um, new firsts, both for Tracy and for myself. You know, it's my, my first regional school committee meeting now. I had my first fire drill a couple of days ago. Um, so every day is exciting. Every day's got something new. And, and a big, uh, shout out to Tracy who, um, uh, came and, you know, she's done enormous contributions, but she really, um, wrangled the schedule, uh, which is just an enormous, uh, task, um, on any year, but to do that being new, new to the role, because she's never been an assistant principal and new to the school
Yeah.
was, was really, uh, amazing. So very grateful for the work that she did with that. And it, and it's all worked out pretty well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, uh, Mr. Lawrence and to Mrs. Sakalowski, right?
Yes.
I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you. I know, I know it's been, uh, you know, it's like a whole new TV show, right?
Yeah.
Like, oh, here we are. Um, thank you so much. It's been a lot of work and, you know, feedback that I, you know, I know I've heard from the community has been largely positive. So
Terrific.
Thank you for a good start. Other questions or comments? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Keep going.
All right. And on to Ms. Vittori for the warrant report and then the closeout of last year.
Exactly. Now I get to speak in the past where everyone's talking about the future. So you have your, um, monthly or, yeah, your monthly warrant report, which is a little longer because we had all the warrants that we processed this summer. Uh, so I did break them out for you between what was fiscal year 22 and the new ones for fiscal year 23. And as I always say, if you're interested in sort of seeing the detail, they're always at central office and we'd love to have you come by and take a peek. Uh, moving on to, uh, closing out fiscal year 22. So we had done a projection when we last met in June and, um, we were in the ballpark. We ended up spending more money than we thought. So you will see, um, net of operations was a little bit, we're still positive, but it wasn't as, um, I think it was about a hundred, $150,000 less, uh, positive, which is actually, um, good because we took care of a few things that were coming up, uh, towards the last two months of school. I sort of gave you a new report because it gets hard to read the running commentary that we do. So I tried to just do the bullets. Um, on the revenue side, um, you know, we're a little bit over, I, I tried to put in the, in the parentheses though, the percentage of our total budget because you can see that we actually fell in, I mean, less than 1% on all these categories, which, um, I think is, is hopefully what our norm will be. Unlike last year where, you know, we just had crazy numbers. I think we're really sort of back to where we're going to be. Um, some of the things that we cannot, um, anticipate tons, sometimes of the state, uh, reimbursement for transportation has been a little crazy because of the hybrid. Uh, the state legislative, legislative group approves an amount, but then they're not really sure how much school districts spent. So, you know, we typically were getting 70 to 80%. During COVID, we've been getting 90 to 98%. So the cherry sheet number is not quite where we're going to land, which is why we're sort of still seeing fluctuations. Um, my, I anticipate that'll be a little bit sane for fiscal year 23 because remember it's based on fiscal year 22 transportation costs. But I think once we get into next year for fiscal year 24, everyone should be back to where they are and whatever the budget says was approved for reimbursement is probably what we're going to see. Uh, so those fluctuations will, um, um, level off that that was the greatest cause of your revenue, uh, variance. And keep in mind that you've got some larger red numbers because that was the give back from the excess E&amp;D that we do, uh, reduce the town's assessment. So I gave you the net number once you take out the $600,000 that we returned. On operating expenses, um, I gave you some background on salaries, on the expenditures, but all in all, those were all really, uh, within budget. Couple of variances between line items. Um, know that we, uh, we sort of Know that we, we sort of budget things in categories and we're very authentic about putting things where they go. And so constantly realigning our budget to make sure we're doing the most accurate reporting that we can based on what Dusty's asking us to do. But also, we're seeing changes in how we operate. I gave you the perfect example of textbooks sort of going away and more online curriculum, which is a different reporting category for us. And so you'll see some fluctuations there. At the end of the day, we had a net surplus of a little over $400,000. I gave you the roll forward of E and D so that you can see how we started with, where we ended with our fund balance last year. You've got your revenue surplus, your operating surplus. All these numbers tie back to your reports so that you can see the pieces that come in. You did approve usage of E and D for fiscal year '23 capital. Remember, the towns covered our larger roofing project, but we covered the smaller ones. That's the $465,000. We also allocated $110,000 of E and D to cover your fiscal year '23 budget, which represented what we thought was going to be our revenue surplus. And as you can see, transportation even went up more than what we thought last March. So at the end of the day, we're sitting on an uncertified E and D balance around 4.39%. So under the five that we've been for the last two years, but I think more in a comfortable range that our, that our towns may be looking for. So that's where we sit right now and we'll see what happens this year. But I think we're sitting in a, in a pretty good, good place as far as how we rolled out or finished up '22. And this is really sort of like the new year because 90% of our payroll is just coming on payroll now. So that's why we always give you your first look at the new year and your October meeting. Literally, the first payroll for half of our staff is going out this Friday. And the teachers were all paid previously. So we're getting everything settled. We'll start looking at the numbers and seeing where we are. But I'm not anticipating any large variance in any of our categories at this early stage.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I just told you just here on stuff, audit's going to start. We're doing our end of the year report. And we'll keep you updated throughout the year on those two pieces.
Thank you. I personally really appreciated the bullet summary. That was very helpful. Other comments, questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I only have to say thank you so much for keeping us all. I would like it if you could come do my family finance. Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Okay, that's, that's it for our reporting out and it's up to you on the consent agenda.
All right. Moving on to item number five, which is the consent agenda, which has been included in your packet. There are two items for us to consent to. One is the approval of the minutes of June 7th. And the second is the middle school field trip, which we need to approve because it's the out-of-state field trip to Washington DC, which would be resuming again after, I believe, two-year hiatus, three-year? Three-year hiatus. So are there any comments or questions about the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as stated in the agenda and packet? Motion by Lynn Collins and second by Mark Healy?
Second, thanks.
Great. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, great. Consent agenda passes. After that, just for folks' information, is a reprint of the school committee meeting schedule. I know we, in our planning over the summer, we added a couple of meetings just in anticipation of some business that would come up so that we're not in the situation where we're kind of sometimes find ourselves in where we're scheduling, trying to schedule meetings at the last minute. Should we not need any of those meetings? We will let folks know in a reasonable amount of time that they can take their calendar back. Just Beth has included her email communication to a community member regarding all of the efforts that have gone into extended day programming. This is also related to the update that Dawn gave earlier this evening. Your subcommittee assignments are attached and I think they are accurate. We had a couple of sort of last-minute adjustments. If you look at it and you see something that you did not expect or that is concerning you, please connect with me after and we will get that sorted out. And then they're just also attached for your information, the school convening minutes of May 16th and May 10th for both the local school committees. Any questions or wonderings about those? Yeah.
Just the calendar for our meetings, that's the same one that we got last year.
Yes. It's just reattached to the packet from your sort of larger distribution. All right. Any other questions? All right.
Oh, I think policy. I'm not doing policy.
Did we take it off? Okay. We did take it off. It just didn't make it in the packet. Okay. And just that Judy will be the point person on policy for the school year. And I think everything else is situated. All right. We will meet again as a region on October 11th. And that is, is that one of the days that we adjusted the time for young people or is that the one at the end of the month?
I think that was Dover's.
Dover's. It's not us. Okay. So that will just be our normal time, 6:30 here, and we will continue to have the Zoom open for community comments.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Judy Miller, Jordan second.
Lynn Collins, second.
Seconded by Lynn Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed. Okay, meeting adjourned at 7:27 PM. Thank you.